Hey, you're truly Kendra here. We're so live, it's crossover TV. I want to thank you, welcome 2013. I want to say I'm so excited to be back in the building. We took two weeks off and we're coming back into the new year and gosh, things are happening. Obama's making changes already as we speak. You know, we're beginning to see change. And you like my glasses, guys? I'm not gonna leave these on the whole time, but I do this because we have a special, yeah, special guest in the building tonight. And I want to do this, I want to say thank you very much for joining me, William Russell Moore. And he is running for...
Yeah, New York City Council.
New York City Council.
Thank you for having me.
You're welcome.
And happy new year to the viewers out there.
Alright, so we're gonna do this, we were on the phone. Oh my, you don't know, you know me, guys. I can't, what? I can talk, okay? So me and William, we were like on the phone. Isaiah's in the background, he's crying, mommy do this, mommy I want this, okay, mommy I want this. And William is like, just being attentive to me, he's waiting, Isaiah's going through his moment, I'm fixing that moment, and William is still just waiting, waiting patiently. So I want to say, um, that's important. I think about things like that.
Yeah.
You know, you talk to people every day, folks, and we need to be a good judgment of character. So, this year, 2K13, I want us to work on it, okay? So, I'll ask you a couple of questions, and then you'll probably just want to tell me a couple of things. And then you guys may be thinking a couple of things, and we'll come up with a solution, and we're gonna work things out, you know, get started in 2013 to make this a better year.
Yes, that's right.
Right? To move in the right direction. So, um, I'll do this, um, Michael, you wanna, I want to do this, William, um, can you do this? Can you look into your camera right there and tell the folks what your view is, uh, and what you're gonna do on just issues in general? What you stand for as a candidate?
Well, first of all, I want to say happy new year to the viewers out there. My name is William Russell Moore, and I'm a Democratic candidate, running for the 18th Councilman District seat here in Bronx County. The district covers Shorehaven, Parkchester, Soundview, Castle Hill, and Clasen Point area. One of the things that I would like to see change in the district that I'm going to serve when I get elected this year, is that we need to have more meeting places. And by that, what I mean is, is that we have so many different cultures, and so many different ethnic groups, and we don't have places to meet and talk about certain issues that is germane to the community. So I want to bring forth a multicultural center in the community, but it's not gonna be a multicultural center like any other that you have seen before. It's gonna be a fully funded multicultural center that's gonna be for profit. Why do I say for profit? We need an economic engine in our community, an economic engine that can tap into the tourism, lucrative tourism business, and bring world-class acts to the district. I'm talking about the 18th Councilman District. Bring world-class acts, off-Broadway acts, on-Broadway performances to the district, but it's also gonna be managed by the community. We're gonna have a Board of Directors, and it's gonna be managed by the community. So it's gonna teach people certain skill sets, and they're gonna have certain business acumen that they can put to use. And we have a lot of talented people in our district, and I'm so proud to be a Bronxite and to be a part of that. So this is some of the things that I want to bring forth, so that we can get our communities moving forward together.
Great, there you have it. So I do this, crossover TV, as we had that long conversation, a lengthy conversation last night, and I told you some things that I think that are important, um, coming, moving forward in 2K13, and, um, you, I gave you, you said, Kendra, I'm gonna do some research, and I'm gonna come back to the public because...
That's correct.
This is, this is how we do it, everybody. And kind of like, I just, I want to make a brief statement first. I want to say that, you know, people get elected, right? And we sit, we sometimes sit back, sometimes, right? You know this. We sit back and we, we wait, we just see, okay, okay, now let you do it. We voted you in, now just do everything. Just go do, we want you to do everything. And that's where it is, and that's where it comes from, but I want us to stop, and don't, and I want you to not think that way. I want us to not just let them do everything, you know, because maybe they say, okay, now we doing everything, now we're tired. Now, you know, so, we gotta do this as a group effort, everybody. So like, you know, I'm gonna be very involved, you know? So, this week, you see that I have William in the house, and can I have that big poster?
Yes.
Oh, don't worry about that. Can I get that big poster? So that big poster right here, um, tell the folks what that's all about.
Well, we have an upcoming fundraiser coming up, um, on January 19th, which is the, uh, the eve of Martin Luther King's birthday. It's gonna be on a Saturday from 5:00 to 10:00 PM at the Bronx Grill, and I'm inviting everyone out there in the community to come forth to this, um, to this fundraiser. It's a fundraiser for my election. Um, and we're gonna pay tribute to a lot of key people in the community who have been in the community for a long time, rendering their service, services to the community tirelessly, and, and, and not getting paid for that. But, and at the, at the same time, they're unsung heroes. I'm talking about unsung heroes like Sarah Lee, who's been out in the community with her bullhorn, and, and basically motivating the community, showing the community, uh, the community passion for a number of years. And, and one thing I want to say, because even in Parkchester, she's from Parkchester, you have folks in Parkchester who are owners and who are renters. And sometimes, when you own property, uh, the powers that be want to treat you more special, but I have a different take on that. You know, you have people who are owners and renters, and I value, yeah, I value the owners, but I value the renters even more, because they're not just owners in the community, they're stakeholders. They're not going nowhere. If your rent is cheap, you're not going anywhere. Like the brother said in the last gubernatorial election, rent is too damn high.
That's right.
But if your, if your rent is, is cheap, you're not going away, and you're gonna have more care for that community. And this is what Sarah Lee exhibits each and every day in the community, and I have to give her a warm round of applause for that.
Most definitely.
Keep up the good work. And, um, and there's countless others, you know, Deborah Oghama, uh, she created the, uh, the African market, where you have fresh greenery and produce and so forth, or folks like that. They care for the community, and they're there each and every day, and you know, we must applaud that, is because, because this is the stuff that's keeping our communities together. We're not, people are not just coming in, because when you're an owner, you come in, you buy property, I'm a owner myself, you buy property, you wait a couple of years, and then you leave.
Right.
That's not stability.
Most definitely.
We want, we want a sustainable Bronx, and to have a sustainable Bronx, you gotta stay, you gotta invest, and you gotta, you gotta, you gotta pay your dues, you know? And you gotta cultivate communities and bring people together, and that's what I represent, and that's the reason why I have the support of Deborah Oghama and Sarah Lee and others. There's a lot, it's a diverse set of folks that support my candidacy, because, like you just said, like you just said, you have politicians that promise, that, that say they're gonna do this and do that. I came into politics not just, you know, like running in, running for office, I went to school for this. I got a BA in political science, I studied. And not only that, prior to that, I was involved in the community. I'm, I'm originally from Harlem, grew up in Harlem, but I had, um, relatives that lived in the Bronx, in Morrisania, during the, the early 70s, during the fire. And we remember how the Bronx was gutted by the fires and arson that was set by landlords because they wanted to get the insurance money, all these different things we had to endure. But it's the renters that stayed. People like that inspired me to even get into, uh, into politics, like, um, my, uh, one of my mentors, uh, that's no longer here in the Bronx, that moved, um, former Deputy Bronx Board President Genevieve S. Brooks. She mentored me. She was one of the architects of the, of the South Bronx in the early age, during the fires, and, um, she formed a organization called Mid Bronx Desperados. They built over a thousand low, low income to moderate income units of housing, who brought, former Bronx, um, former Bronx Board President Farrar called her one of the chief architects of the South Bronx. And he, she was the deputy board president. These are the people that I was raised up into, uh, into politics, into the board president's office, and who I admire. And these are, these are the trailblazers who set my path to social empowerment by example today. So, these are the things that I represent, and I'm not going anywhere, okay? I'm running for this seat, yes, I'm running against incumbent, because I don't think the job that the incumbent has done for the past eight years is enough. We need new change, we need new blood. And another thing I want, another thing I want to tap into, and I'm not, I'm not making any, uh, personal attacks on anybody, but what's hap, what is hurt from a political standpoint, this is the fundraiser, please come to this, but from a political standpoint...
I'm gonna keep holding it.
Yes.
I want you to hold that.
Yes, okay, I'll hold it up.
Hold that up.
It's also in Spanish and English, because I represent both communities.
Thank you, that's so important.
Spanish and English.
Oh, hold on. Hola, ¿cómo están? Good evening, people, thank you for tuning in, Lock Your Dolls, crossover TV. Okay, we do that sometimes.
Yes, you gotta do that.
Yes, okay.
You know, I have, I have Latin in my blood, I have African-American and so forth, so we have to represent the whole diaspora of, of people of color. And it's so much, so much of us out there. But one other thing that I was gonna tackle also, is that what has happened with Bronx politics, um, uh, you know, we have a situation where the family dynasties, at one time, early in the, in the history of Bronx County, it, it meant something. We had people that was reputable, and they, and they, you know, they got into politics, and they did, they worked hard for the community. But, uh, and then over the years, if, you know, when they retired and so forth, they passed the, the ranks, or, or the torchlight, uh, to their sons or their daughter. But, you know, some, some, for some reason, we gotta, we gotta wave at certain things, you know? Really cultivating or taking care of people's needs in our community, and we're not, we're not doing that the right way no more. You know, like I said, I came from Board President Fernando Farrar's office, who taught me the diligence of, 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 of taking care of people's problems, you know, and, and tackling issues from domestic violence, housing, unemployment, um, government services, welfare, and so forth. But we're not tackling that as we, as we should anymore. And one of the things that, you know, I don't see what's happening, you know, we look at the plight of the Bronx, the Bronx has the highest unemployment rate.
Most definitely.
You know, in the country. And, you know, people are not, people out there suffering, you know?
Most of them, I talk about it every week, son.
Where, where are the outreach buses from these government agencies? I don't see any.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Nothing's happening.
When you, when you travel the district, you don't see a council bus rendering embossment services to the people in the street. They have office hours from, say, 10 o'clock, not 9 o'clock.
Not 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
That's right.
To maybe 5 o'clock. And, and then they wonder why the people are not supporting them, because people, you know, people know when you for them and when you're not for them, okay? So you gotta, we gotta have more considerations for the peoples and render the type of services that's gonna impact on a person's lives and cure their problems. We have government agencies that is so, um, you know, I mean, Mayor Bloomberg and his agencies, a lot of them are, to me, are ineffective, pretty much.
Wow, you said, you preaching to the choir.
And, and the reason why I say that, and it's, and you know, and the mayor is maybe trying to do a lot in his, in his third, third term, you know, because he, he went against the, uh, the, uh, the term limit law, um, and, and an overwhelming majority of city council persons, Kristen Quinn, who's running for mayor, and her associates that she, you know, um, got to vote for it, voted it in. So now, a lot of folks who were supposed to have, have their term ended in two years, have an additional term, like the incumbent I'm running against. And it's unfair, because now you're going against the public, in my opinion, the public trust. You may say, Moore, it's not about, it's not a trust issue, but it's a public trust, because the, the people voted to make, to keep the terms of politicians to two terms, which is four years twice, so it's eight years. So, you know, just because the man felt that, you know, one, he's a billionaire, and, and that he has a, a...
Empire is growing and growing up.
A business savvy and so forth, and, and he was talking about the economy at the time, you know, and before that, he was against it, but then, I guess he felt it was, hey, you know, a candy store, so he wanted to run again. And then at the same time, then all these other sea of public officials ran along with him, who end up getting a third term. It's unfair to the, to the people, because when you have bad leadership, all you're doing is prolonging the agony, okay? So we need to cut the agony short, and that's why the people voted to keep term limits to two terms. So I don't want to see another mayor go in there again and try the same thing that Bloomberg did, because it, it creates a lot of mess for the people to suffer.
So how do we turn, this is another thing, how do we, this is important. So how do we turn that around? Um, let's see, we're thinking, when Bloomberg is gone, how do we, now, how do we, and most people don't know about lobbying, most people don't know about, you know, how they can make changes. So, we're gonna go, I'm gonna let you think about that. I'm gonna go to DJ Bentley right now, and say, "Good evening, DJ Bentley." Hi, baby, how are you? Good evening, he's in the building. Alright, when you hear the good vibe music, it's DJ Bentley. Now, while he's playing that, you had a time, you have one moment to think about it.
Yes.
Okay, are we ready?
We have to hold our leaders and our elected officials accountable. That's the way you change things. You know, um, when, when, when city coun, you know, when city council persons, men and female, act out of the discretion of the people that elected them into that office, and they vote for bills and amendments and anything down the pipeline, or they do anything contrary to the administration, we have to hold them accountable. And, and by that, I mean, it's the power of the vote. You see all the stops that was put out against Barack Obama, and first, I want to also say a happy, uh, new year to President Barack Obama for his second reelection term, I voted for him, and a lot of people in Parkchester voted for him. Um, and, you know, we have to hold them accountable, and, and it's the power of the vote. You know, uh, uh, when folks are up for reelection, don't vote for them. Research and find out who's running, and if you don't find anyone qualified out there, then you run yourself.
I like that.
And that's one of the things I'm talking about, the dynasty politics. It's a mind game going on, okay? Because what happens with the dynasty politics, right? There's an umbrella, right? There's this umbrella of Democrats, I'm a Democrat, but they, they want to make you think as though they're, they're doing it right, and they're, and they're taking care of people's needs, and they're not. It's a country club.
Most definitely.
Okay? And, and you have to have an in-road ticket to benefit from the services that are being rendered. Yes, they're supposed to render you service, but the, the level and quality of services is not being rendered to the people correctly. You ever been into some of these municipal agencies, and, and you go in there, and you have your prob, you have serious problems? You're about to be evicted. I'm gonna tell you a true story.
Okay.
Um, 1995, after I graduated from Stony Brook University, and I worked in the mayor's office, you know, from Department of Youth Services, uh, um, and, um, and they heard about me and stuff like that, I was tapped by the Dinkins administration to work in his press and speech writing office, and I served there for a number of years. Yeah, a number of years, and then David Dinkins was up for reelection, then he lost. Then I was held over by Mayor Giuliani, because they liked my work, okay? Um, and then after a while, after I got, I got their press office, jump-started their press office, I was let go.
Oh my...
Oh, I was about to be let go, but word was still about, out in the community about who I was and my work and, and my, my vision and my impact on, on municipal agencies, right? So then I was tapped by Board President Fernando Farrar. So, you know, when you go into these municipal agencies, and you go in there with a real problem, "I'm about to be evicted," you know, they treat you like...
Nothing.
Like you're garbage. I'm being real. I'm, this is real talk, cross talk, real talk. They treat you like garbage. And that's, and, and any person that's receiving a paycheck from the, the city of New York should not treat a person that's walking into their facility as a piece of garbage or, or, or a homeless person on the street, or whatever.
What, can I, can I intercede for a minute? Okay. This is my thing, this is my take, and I've been in offices and I've seen things, and government agencies, well, PA, Public Assistance, is, I don't understand, the DHS, HRA, um, how they're running shelters, all these things, it's just, it's, I'm amazed by it, how they are allowed to treat people, and this is actually legal. I'm, I'm just not understanding.
Well, again, that's part of the problem, and it, and it shouldn't embarrass the mayor, it shouldn't embarrass any commissioner that heads a lot of these agencies, because that tells me they're not really taking a check on, on the quality services that are being rendered, okay? Most corporations, I come from a, um, from the private sector, right, until I get into government to straighten things out. Um, most corporations, they run quality, uh, quality insurance checks, checks and balances to see how they're rendering services to their, to their customers. We need, I mean, come on, Mayor Bloomberg said he's a businessman, right? We voted for him to be a businessman, but yet the certain principles and foundations and tenets that are, that are, that is taught in business school, in my opinion, is not being utilized. Okay, is there a survey of, of, that's being rendered to all the customers or constituents in the city of New York, in the agencies? And what is that grade? We have letter grades for, uh, for, um, mom-and-pop shops, diners, and so forth, that the city Board of Health administers to, to these mom-and-pop shop, I mean, I traveled the district, and they are outraged, the mom-and-pop shop, the diners, and so, they're complaining about the, the, uh, the Health Department coming in their store and, and, and looking for problems, finding, finding erroneous problems, and then charging them, giving them a fine. And it's, it's like they're milking the system. It's the same way with the parking, parking tickets. It's, it's, it's a game.
Hold on.
And you're milking the people.
Hold on, yeah, hold on, hold on.
Don't get me started.
All those questions, forget about it, you took your everything.
Don't get me started.
You got, you took your everything in 20 minutes, I kid you not. Alright, forget the questions, you run the show. There we go. Bentley, give me a song to just piggyback off of what I'm saying right now, give me something. DJ Bentley's in the building tonight, and I thank you for doing that, for saying that. The parking tickets, I'm outraged.
Yeah.
It's like, why drive anymore?
Yeah. I mean, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go in the parking, but I also want to talk about the, the, the mom-and-pop shop, and I'm gonna hit that.
Yes, that's my first.
Remind me about that. You know, again, the Health Department, they're going around, uh, inspecting a lot of these restaurants, and I gotta speak up for the restaurants and the businesses in my district, because I travel my district. I'm like Barack Obama in the 18th Councilman District, I travel it. I don't know what the incumbent is doing, but she's not doing the right thing in this district, and it's time for that to stop, and we have to straighten that out. But I travel it, and I talk to these mom-and-pop shops and these restaurant owners, and they're just tired of the Health Department, the Sanitation Department, finding garbage, they sweep their, their streets, they clean in front of there, trash may blow over to their, to their, uh, business, and then all of a sudden, they get a ticket from the sanitation agency. And this is repeated and repeated and repeated. I mean, how much, how much fines can we give Bronxites or Bronx businesses for them to stay in business? We're milking them, or actually, in my opinion...
Killing them.
You know, stealing their wealth, you know, and it's unfair. We cannot, we cannot play a governmental Robin Hood...
Most definitely.
On, on those that we say that we want to provide businesses and services in our district. They're there to make a profit, and they're there to pay employees so that they can feed their families, but if they gotta dip into their coffers and pay fines and fines, that means they're gonna eliminate a lot of the workers that they have there, and then you're gonna have an epidemic of people closing their shops and moving elsewhere where they're not gonna be targeted by government agencies, ticketing them to death. It has to stop. We have to curtail, curtail these practices and, and, and make it fair for people to do business, make it fair for people to rent, um, housing, and so forth. Now we're gonna tackle the, uh, the parking tickets.
I didn't even have to remind, I, listen, listen, y'all, he got this all under control. I didn't even have to remind him. So just imagine when he gets in there, okay, go ahead, take over.
I have no notes, I don't have no things, no...
Nothing for me.
No, nothing on the right, right hand.
DJ Bentley, wait.
This is coming from the heart, people, okay? It's coming from the heart.
Most definitely.
And the parking, the parking department, the Department of Finance, Parking Bureau, and the police, you know, it, it, a lot of things has to stop. It seems like there's a routine of stop, where they stop your cars, and, and you know what I say, it's to make safety, it's a lot of bogus excuses why they, they use out there to, to pull you over and give you a ticket. It's all about, it's about the quotas, okay? And if the police department is honest enough, if the Department of Finance and the Parking Bureau is honest enough, but they can't be because it's about money.
It's about money, all of this.
Okay? It's about generating money so that they can fund their pet projects, okay? But it, but, you know, if we said, okay, ticket people and give that money to the poor, give that money to domestic violence issues, uh-uh.
Uh-uh.
That would never happen, because it's gonna benefit people. It's not gonna benefit the coffers, and it's not gonna benefit their private interests and their private pockets. So those things gotta stop. The predatory, and it's predatory.
It is.
We talk about predatory lending of, of, of banks and, 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 you know, money or conglomerates, but it's predatory ticketing by the city agency to stalk, stalk you, or more, why are you saying stalk you? That's the wrong word, find something else. Okay, fine, if a ticket agent hides in the bush, hide around the corner, or walk by, see that you drive up, right? See you drive up, and then he takes down the time that you parked there, and then hide in the bush, and by the very second, jump out to give you a ticket, what is that? That's predatory ticketing, okay? So we gotta stop the, uh, the...
How do you get two tickets? Okay, I have, this is, this is my pet peeve. How do you get two tickets and like, right away? Like, once you get one ticket, okay, if I did not get up and move my car, right? Why do I come downstairs, you know, it's only an hour and a half, right? How do I get another ticket? It's okay.
Yeah.
How is that?
The phantom ticket, right?
Two tickets.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know what it is, they, they checking it, and then, and if you, and if you don't pay, I mean, if you don't move that car within a certain amount of time, they ticket you again. And these practices gotta stop, because you're stealing people's wealth. When a person have to, uh, 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 think about paying a ticket over buying milk and groceries for their family, or, or medication, lifesaving medication, because they gotta pay a ticket, you're hurting people, okay? And then, you know, they say that you can't fight City Hall, you know, City Hall, we need to stop fighting the people, okay? We need to stop city council, City Hall, the mayor's agency, stop fighting the people, go about business fair, okay?
Can, can I say this about park, I'm sorry, I know I'm talking a lot, it seems like there's more going on with parking tickets, but this is important, you lose your car, some people, that's their source of work, their source of income.
Yes.
So that means they lose their jobs, that means they lose their house, so, I'm just trying to figure out, when does it, when does it get better? Because now, you can't even make a, you can't even make a payment arrangement anymore. You remember when you can make a payment arrangement? Not anymore. So if you go into motor vehicles, run down there to get that agreement, it's not happening.
Yeah.
So these, why are they allowed to like, take away at us and pick and pick until there's nothing left, and then when we say, okay, we don't have no way to live now, I lost my job, okay, we still not gonna help you. So when does it get better?
Well, you know, true story again, you know, I have a, a friend of mine, that he used to get ticketed left and right, and he ended up moving to Atlanta, Georgia, because he couldn't, he couldn't, he was tired of being picked on with the, the police, the ticket agencies, and, and he said, you know what, I'm out of New York. And that, and that's what you having, a lot of people being fed up with New York, and fleeing New York, and going someplace else where they, you know, they can park in their garage, they have more space and so forth. But it's about the administrative procedures in these agencies. You know, you know, the mayor need to, you know, basically revisit, well, he's out anyway, but the new mayor.
I, I feel like, this is what I'm thinking, I don't know what, how you feel about this, you could let me know about this, because you're a smart guy. Kind of like, you know, Obama, like, people didn't know just how smart he was, so Tea Party thought you was gonna like, run him around, but he's in the building again, and you guys need to know that he's not gonna allow what happened the last time. And that's what people need to understand, that even as politicians, sometimes the hands are tied from another office. So when that one office of Barack, you know, the, the bureaucrat, if, if, if it falls over into another office and that office, you know, says, okay, you won't be able to do this because under this administration, this can't happen. Under Bloomberg, nothing good is gonna happen. And on his way out, he's gonna do the worst things he can possibly do.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, that's really what's gonna happen.
Well, you know Bloomberg, you know, when, when, there's a danger folks, when you have, uh, uh, people with money, millionaires, billionaires, uh, buy offices because that's what they basically doing. They have the wealth to buy the position that they're running for. Uh, I'm running as, as a, a Bronx site, right, where I have to raise my own money. Okay, that's why we're having a fundraiser. We have to raise our own money. The, the, uh, the campaign finance uh, says that I have to raise about, uh, five thousand dollars from seventy-five people for I to, for I to get, uh, to get the first, uh, uh, to, to finish the first threshold so I can get matching funds, okay? So we have to raise five thousand dollars, or you know, about seventy-five dollars per person or whatever, however you wanna do the math. That's the first threshold. Then we gotta raise a certain amount of, extra amount of money, probably another five thousand dollars. So that's the reason why we're doing a fundraiser. But when you have, uh, billionaires and people with money, they can go around these rules. The, the rules don't apply to them. So they use their wealth to buy people in the community, okay? Uh, um, quote unquote credible people in the community, people with influence to side with their views and side with their position to give them an endorsement. And I, and I feel, you know, when I, when I talked about the dynasty politics, that's gonna happen in this race also. Where you may have an incumbent that's not doing anything, right? Not doing anything, not going anywhere, meeting with the people and, and really, uh, uh, setting, setting certain agendas the right way in eight years. So you're gonna have, uh, the dynasty politics come out and support her and endorse her. And it's gonna be a, a domino effect of endorsement to make it, to make, to legitimize herself or legitimize her, uh, for the eight years of doing anything. So, um, so these are the things that are hurting our communities and we gotta change that. We gotta come together as people. And first and foremost, I'm the first ever African-American candidate to run in this district. I believe in this district, uh, uh, the African-American, uh, 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 vote is a powerful vote. The Latino vote is a powerful vote.
Most definitely. As they found out in the election for presidency. Finally.
Yeah.
Finally is dawning on them.
And I have a vast amount of, of Latino and black support throughout the district in the Parkchester area. I believe Parkchester is a sleeping giant. Shorehaven where I live is a sleeping giant. Castle Hill is a sleeping giant. Of people who are not actively voting because they're discouraged, uh, uh, by the, the turn of events and what's going on in the community. But they are so excited with my candidacy. And, and they, and one person told me the other day, a stranger person that called me on the phone, uh, you are, you are the real candidate. You are, you know, when they said that I'm the real candidate, meaning that I'm not a handpicked crony candidate by the Democratic Party. I'm someone that basically, uh, uh, is free, independent, independent thinking and is running for the, for the values and hopes and dreams and, and inspiration of the district. And you don't get that in this, in, in, in politics. You don't get someone that's free. A lot of them, you know, can't speak the way I'm speaking. Uh, and if they.
I'm in, you know, I'm sitting here, I'm in, I'm in awe. I'm like, my mouth is open.
Yeah.
I'm sorry y'all. But I'm in awe and I have wanted to have a conversation. I've been saying, you know, I said the best way to do it, because I've been reaching out to the politicians. I let you know, when the advantage voucher for, um, was, was, was abolished, uh, last year, um, two thousand and eleven, when that was abolished, you know, basically, I went to all the polit, all of, you know, the council, every district, you know, I went to every, um, borough. And so, and one borough, they didn't even know what the advantage voucher was. That was their last housing voucher that they had for people in the system and shelter. And many families will not leave shelter anytime soon. That, some, some people have been there four years. And now with Sandy, they may not need, leave no time soon. And when the politician said, um, I don't know about what is that? You know, the politician shouldn't have to tell, ask me, what is it? They're supposed to tell me what it is and what they think about, what they can do to make changes or would they like to make a quote? You know, if I call you from a news media outlet, I want you to tell me what you know. Not, I could tell you everything. But I don't wanna tell you about this.
You're not there to educate them. They're there to educate you. Yeah, that's correct.
And I wanna come back, I wanted to come back and bring it to the public because people need to know what's going on. People are sitting at path, path is not in movement. When they send them to shelter, they have to leave. Families are relocating every ten days, place to place, and then, and they try their best DHS, um, path to deny them. And they're on the street and they lock them out the system. So, you know, we're in a very sad place.
You know, you see, things like that happen, you know, when agencies, uh, uh, prolong your agony and your suffering. It's because they're bankrupt of ideas, okay? So that means, you know, the, you know, the mayor and, and a lot of, and a lot of folks who speak, speak out against, uh, uh, public schools and talking about, uh, let's shut down a, a failing school and so forth. How about shutting down some of these agencies that are not serving the people? Right, shut them down. You have, in your power to shut them down, revamp it, do something else that's gonna serve the interest of people. So they don't have to go around and from, from door to door, suffering from place to place and, and it's such, it's such a vicious circle.
I got an idea. I got an, cameraman, studio. I want you to just look at my face yet. There we go. I got an idea. Um, and this goes out to Bloomberg and the Commissioner, Seth Diamond, okay? So you're paying three thousand dollars a month for a family of two to live in a shelter, a month. And they've been living in this shelter for four years, maybe three years, right? Maybe they're gonna be there another year until Bloomberg leaves. So let's count like maybe five years that this one family has been in shelter. So you ever thought about, okay, you have the vouchers and this voucher and that voucher. Have you thought about just, you know, trying to free up the shelter system a little bit? You know, opening up Section Eight for a minute? You know, I know it's money, but you're still spending money anyway.
Yeah.
You're spending a little bit of money anyway. And I want you to think about this. Everything is work, 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 even domestic violence. It's work, work, work. They come out the hospital with broken arms, children on their back, no clothes and straight into shelter with no money and no food. And there's no food in the food pantries and the shelters don't have money. And HRA takes too long to, uh, to give them anything to feed their children because it's a process now. And now they're just stuck and don't know what to do. I know that the children have to come out of shelter. These children are moved from place to place. This cannot be fair to children. So we have to come up with something. Another voucher maybe, opening up Section Eight. But another program, something needs to come into the system. If you total up what you're paying for five years or three years or four years, I mean, but you gotta think about the individual that's coming up. Where are they going? What's gonna happen? Let's, let's work from the ground up. These, these are babies. These are babies in shelter. You're not only controlling the human being, the mothers or the fam, the parents. Children, families are living in rooms, sir. This is where we are right now. DHS, their shelters are pushing them out and they're pushing them out into rooms. So you have three and four people living in a room. This is where our country, our great nation has come to. And I think you should be ashamed. I, I mean, who's doing and who's running like DHS, HRA, Bloomberg? Good evening Seth Diamond, okay? I need you guys to start thinking more. I was watching, um, the City Council, um, their, their, um, open, um, public, um, hearing. And one politician said, what do they have to do? Work their way out of homelessness? You know, it's just getting to be very pitiful that, and the country, and people didn't realize when the rent was going up. What did that man said? The rent is too damn high?
Too damn high.
Nobody realized when that rent was going up because they had jickets, Section Eight, NYCHA. So NYCHA was for the poor people, for our, our lower class that we, we don't have. So that was NYCHA. And now NYCHA is not for that class anymore. What are they gonna do?
Because it's prime real estate.
Yeah, so now, so now basically, they have nowhere to go. Domestic violence? They make this, they make it so hard to get into NYCHA through domestic violence. Shelter is not priority anymore. It used to be, if you were in shelter, it was, you were a priority for NYCHA, no longer. The people that work are the people that's getting out. Now how about if you cannot work? How about if you're disabled and you're in a shelter? They don't have anything geared for you. As Seth Diamond said, they're just working on working people, getting the working people out. What about the people that are disabled and have disabled children? They are not leaving. And that's a shame. So we have, these are things that we need to think about. At least opening up Section Eight to the disabled at least. That cannot work. It just has to get to a place where we think about all. We just gotta do better. I mean, people, remember, I always tell you this, we do this every week on Cross Over TV. Every couple of weeks, I remind you to look after your neighbors, to think about the elderly, to think about who's getting the meal, who's eating. You know, sometimes we're so busy, we don't even think about it. But we need to start thinking about it. You know, I need to say, hey, William, you all right? You good? What you need? You need anything?
That's true.
You know?
That's true.
This is where we have to, we have to take care of each other.
Yeah.
Because right now, it's like a blackout for the system. The system says, we're not helping. Um, to be honest, some of the office, you know, is the politician's hands, they're tied, right? You see Obama? See what happened with the Tea Party? They tied his hands. They said, we're gonna do this to you. Every time you come up, we're gonna say no. Every time you wanna pass it, we're gonna say no. This is what was agreed on, on inauguration, the night it was inaugurated before this. And they tied his hands for a couple of years. So this is where we are right now. With Bloomberg are tying the agency's hands. I think that for shelters, especially for shelters, there should be someone from, um, an advocate from these organs, the advocates don't help.
But they, see, they don't wanna.
They're not in shelter. There's a power wheel in shelter. There's a power wheel, so they refuse. They just let, it's a form of abuse, another form of abuse in shelter. I mean, to those who, who prey victim to it, who allow it, you know? Cause not everybody is gonna allow that, you know what I mean? But they have a group of people that they, they do this to. They force them out, they force them to leave and they have nowhere to go. There's no, um, there's no passes. The, the system, how do you, how do you live in shelter for three years with your children? And you're not allowed to pass out on Christmas, on Thanksgiving. You can't spend time with a family member that can house you for one day. Not they can't take you in for a year, they can't take you in for three months. But they can let you come over and get a hot meal and a warm bed for one night. And you deny residents this. So this is where, as politicians, you know, everybody act like they don't know what's going on. And recently, I'm, I'm talking to politicians, now they say, oh, we didn't know this. Now we know. So now what are we gonna do about it? Because it has to be a level of control. Shelters, it's like, even DHS's advocates don't have any control what goes on inside the shelters. There's a problem with that. Because it, it has to be somebody running the farm that makes sense.
That's true.
You can't just let every shelter have different, you know, guidelines. You, you can, you have to be home by nine o'clock as a grown up? As a grown up every day, seven days a week for three years, five years?
Yeah.
You, this is something to think about. Now tell me what is that? What, what that feeling be? What if you have to be home every day by nine, you, okay, signing by nine o'clock, sir, or you're gonna get kicked out?
Well, it's, it strips you of your manhood, if, if you're a man, and it strips you of your womanhood if you're a woman. And it's just, you know, we gotta do better than that, you know? Uh, and like I said, when I first graduated from, uh, Stonerbrook University, I, um, I, uh, moved into the Bronx back in nineteen ninety-five. And I saw a lot of problems within my community, okay? I saw a lot of problems. Um, the building I was, I was living in, it was, um, like, you know, slumlord conditions and so forth. Uh, leaky ceilings and so forth. And so what I said to myself, I said, you know, we need a change. I started a tennis association. So people have to be more organized today. We have to organize ourselves and we can't depend on government to do for us. We gotta, we gotta tell government what we need. And we gotta, like, it goes back to holding government accountable, okay? Folks like Bloomberg, they feel immune, okay? They feel immune to the system because one, his money put him in there. But he's on his way out. What we need is, we need, we need a, 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 a union friendly, uh, mayor that's to come in, into office this time around. That's gonna serve the people's interest. Cause unions take care of people's interests. They make sure they fight for people and they fight for certain agencies. Uh, they, they, they'll train their workers to care for people within that system, to, to, to provide better services. So a lot of things has to change. So we need to, we need to get back to the old school and, and hold people accountable and make change in, in government.
Okay, so let's talk about this. Let's do this now because I'm gonna work, I see that it's gonna be a lot of work going on. We're gonna be back and forth. And I truly appreciate you, uh, taking your time to come up here to Cross Over TV and just talk about some things that are very important, the things that we need that are viable, that are gonna come to us if you are elected. It's very important to do this, express your views. And we were talking about so many things.
Yeah, I wanna talk about the Stop and Frisk.
That's what I was gonna go.
Yeah, Stop and Frisk. Um, it's a, it's a serious problem in our community. Um, both from a, a, a black and Latino standpoint, but also from a Caribbean standpoint as well. And I'll speak on both. You know, um, you know, when we, uh, uh, stop people, like I said myself, I used to be stopped back in the day and so forth, uh, uh, by, uh, law enforcement officers because they had a suspicion that you was either going to commit a crime or committed a crime. It's crazy. It's racial profiling in my, in my view, you know? And then when you push against, uh, push up, uh, young, uh, African-American Latino males against a car or against a building and you rifle through their pockets and you come up empty, you know, um, it's an embarrassment. And you, you're basically, uh, making, uh, the community, uh, uh, feel like criminals.
The, because where, can I say?
You're demonizing them.
The insult, because then the insult is already there.
Yeah.
So in that, in that person's mind, they did nothing wrong, the insult and how they feel against law, the law, um, police officers, it's there already, right? Okay, I'll let you go ahead now.
And, and you know, their motto is, uh, serve, protect and something else, you know? Uh, you're not, you're not doing that. You, you're basically cau, you're causing, uh, uh, friction between the community. And if, if law enforcement and, 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 and profiling, or you know, they don't wanna call it, you know, the, you know, the victim always, always call their, uh, uh, atrocities or their, their, um, their attack or whatever you wanna call it, um, one thing. And then, and then law enforcement call it a different thing. But when we're being, uh, uh, um, pushed up against the wall or a car by law enforcement and, 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 and you come up empty, it's an insult to our, to our integrity, for one, you know, you know? It's an insult to who we are and, and it, it causes a rift again between law enforcement and the community. So now there's a big distrust, you know? And then, you know, I was listening to a lot of the, uh, the rhetoric, uh, from, from government side and also law enforcement side in the community. And you know, you have, um, um, groups that grew out of the Stop and Frisk movement and also the, um, the Operation Wall Street movement, like Oper, Operation, I think it's Occupy the Bronx. And you know, we have to eliminate, uh, Stop and Frisk. There's no going back. We have to eliminate it. Um, and you know, one thing that we need to do to eliminate, we need to come up with solutions that's gonna solve the rift between, uh, the African-American and Latino community and the police. One of the things that I came up with is, is a, is a program that I would like to, uh, uh, work with my colleagues in government and also the religious community. It's called Operation Rescue. And the way this works is, is Operation Rescue will tap into the funding of the NYPD. I know they're gonna fight me. Tap into their funding and we're gonna use that funding, a certain amount of funding of that. And we're gonna, uh, uh, recruit at-risk youth who the police consider to be, um, criminals.
What's the age group?
Eighteen to forty. You know, or even younger than.
Can we go, can we go sixteen?
We can go sixteen to forty, whatever it is. We're gonna create this program.
Cause you know, we said we were gonna talk about this, right? You said, me and you, me and you. Okay. You know why? Cause I figured that, like, I started a youth program from five to twenty-one because the kids, they learn. If we teach them from here and keep teaching them and keep teaching them and they grow and they grow, right?
Yeah.
And like, I don't know, like, like a big brother, the cops should be like a big brother, like going into the schools when they speak. Have one of the kids go in with them and help them. Show other kids that, look, these, we're working with the cops. We're working with law enforcement.
Yeah, you know, you know.
Would that help?
Yeah, yeah, that would help. You know, like, we could set the parameter of the age group any way we wanna set it. You know, Operation Rescue, that's the, the program I wanna create. And, and, and it's gonna be designed to, to, to eliminate the frisk, frisk, the frisk, the friction between the police and the community. And again, you know, those who are at risk, at the, you know, that the police profile, racially profile, black and Latino and Caribbean and say, hmm, that guy with the dreadlocks looked like a criminal. You see what he did in, you know, he went in his pocket kinda strange. Let's go over there and stop and frisk him. Ask him, ask him who he is and his questions and so forth. Now let's suppose he has some marijuana in his pocket, you know, and it's, and it's less than the, the legal required, uh, uh, amount that is criminal. Some of these officers, they don't know that, you know, a lot, the, the, a certain amount of, uh, 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 marijuana has been decriminalized by the, the state government.
Wait, say that one more time to the people?
A certain, a certain amount of marijuana, I forgot what the, the, the amount is, but less than a, a, a nickel bag, you know? Has been decriminalized by, by the state government. But a lot of these officers, there was still, and it, it was another trick too. If you, and you know, if you told a guy, take out, uh, take stuff out your pocket and then he exposed it, then now it's criminal because now you, you're putting it in public view and now they can arrest you.
One question. Okay.
So it's a trick.
Let's say, right, so let's say, not me, y'all know I'm.
That's predatory policing.
Cloud called me a Christian the other day, so y'all know me better than that. But I'm saying, let's say I took out a, you know, my pockets. But I don't have to go in my pocket, right? How about if I say, excuse me officer, I, I would not like to go in my pockets right now. I'd like to pass on that, you know?
Yeah, you can do that. Let them go to your own.
And how about they be like, well, I'm gonna need you to go in your pockets. I'm gonna need you to do that because I need you to do that.
No, let them put on their gloves and, uh, let them go through your pockets.
And then what?
And if it's, if you have a joint in your pocket, then they can't charge you, okay?
Really? Say that one more time.
If they, if they, if they find a joint in your pocket which is less than the, the criminal, uh, uh, statue, then they can't charge you. But again, you know, you know.
One, one.
Yeah.
One joint.
One joint. Um, you know, but again, a lot of these police officers.
What about a spliff? Hold on. Cause a spliff is different from a joint. It has a little more weight on it.
Yeah, but.
Cause some people, I don't wanna get in trouble. I don't want them to say, William said, or William said that we only have one.
First of all, I don't want you smoking marijuana anyway. I'm, I'm not condoning marijuana usage. What I'm saying is that.
But it's medical marijuana, sir, sir. Don't forget. I'm gonna get you out of trouble right here. This is medical marijuana.
I'm just saying, I don't want you to have an arrest record and be sent to Rikers Island and then, then robbed of your freedom, okay? And like I said, I, I talked about the differences of, of Stop and Frisk having on the African-American and Latino community and the Caribbean community. With the criminal, with the Caribbean community, if they, if they're not legally in the United States or they have a visa or whatever, and if they get stopped and they have, and they, and they get a charge and that charge turns to a felony charge, they get deportation. Procedure starts immediately.
So how does that work? Tell me one more time for the Stop and Frisk, for folks that, um, are Caribbean.
Well, yeah, for Caribbean, you know, if you get stopped and frisked and you have, and you have drugs on you and you get stopped, you're not just going to Rikers.
A joint, a joint.
Well, with a joint, yeah, they, but it's, it's different because then they get other agencies involved.
No, I'm saying, now, let's say the same scenario. Yeah, cause it's different.
It's very different.
Okay, let's say the same scenario we just used. Let's say, okay, no, so excuse me, sir, I don't wanna go. Don't be rude, everybody. Don't be like, nah, go away. Don't be rude. Hold on. It's, it's very serious. So let's say, you know, they're from the Caribbean, they take, you know, let's say we pick any place.
They got a spliff.
In their pocket and they don't wanna take it out. A spliff is a little bit bigger than a joint. So let's say they had a joint. Let's use a joint. Let's use a joint. Cause nobody's using a joint anymore though. I'm worried. So let's say they have a, y'all might wanna change those blunts and splits to joints, but I'm just saying, I'm not telling you to do drugs. But I'm saying, I, yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, bring the weight down a little bit.
A joint.
A joint, yeah, a joint. So let's say you had this joint. We making this a lot of fun, everybody. But we giving you information. We're teaching you. On the download, we trying to tell you something, right, sir?
Save your life and save you from getting a criminal record because a lot of.
And deportation. So like that joint, that joint, so that one particular joint, if it happens and they, and they search you, even if you didn't give them permission, that one joint, let, now let's change it around. Now what happens?
Well, I mean, for a Caribbean person? Well, I mean, you know, we have a lot of bias, racial bias within the police department. You know, you could say, well, you're wrong for saying that, fine, okay? We wouldn't have a lot of, uh, uh, officers who are, we have a lot of, uh, officers, they call it friendly fire, who are black, dress in regular clothing and run down the street and then all of a sudden they get shot by an officer that's on the job. Why? Oh, they thought he was a suspect. But he was pursuing another criminal, but he was dressed down. The reason why you shot him, cause you thought he was a criminal. But if he was white and running down the store, oh, he's just jogging. You know, so a lot, there's a lot of things that we gotta rectify. Okay, for the Caribbean folks, you know, again, you have a joint, you know, they may have a bias and they say, oh man, you know, this guy, he's a Caribbean and Jamaican, he may be running drugs. So now they, they're gonna, you know.
Get another agency, right?
They'll get another agency involved, but they'll arrest you, even though they're not supposed to arrest you for, for, uh, 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 a joint or something like that, they'll arrest you. Wrongfully, then you gotta spend court costs and all these other things to fight, go to court. It's a vicious cycle and it's to pay the system. The system is benefiting from this.
That, that, that's what, that's, that's capitalized.
The judge, the lawyers.
Everybody, right?
The, uh, what they, what they call it.
They're building more jails.
Oh, they, they, they build jails based on the third grade, grade level. But yeah, you know, so it's a vicious, a vicious cycle. So you know, we, you know, we, we gotta, you know, we always talk about sensitivity training. It's not working. It's not working, you know? And, and we, you know, we talking about having, you know, I think you have the, um, uh, the Guardian Association, I think the black officers, I believe. Um, you know, that's the reason why you have to form association of, of, of black and Latino officers within the police department so that you can. so that you can have some fairness and then they can render, uh, uh, real community policing fairly with the community.
Can you say that one more time? Just looking to that camera and say one more time what you just said.
No, we have association of black and Latino officers. You know, they, they gotta form associations so that this way, they can render, uh, um, justice and fairness to the community properly. You know what I'm saying? So these are the things that, that needs to be done because there, it, there is a problem. Like there's a problem in the, the fire department, um, you know, with, um, racism and so forth. They're not hiring enough minorities. I don't even like to use the term minority because we're not minority, but enough people of color, they're not hiring. And, and there's a problem. It's, and it's all about, because it's a well-paying job. That's what it's about. It's the money. It's, it's a middle-class income. Paying seventy thousand to six figures or better with overtime and so forth and pensions. So it's crazy. So these are, these are the reason why people are, 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 are having racist attitudes within a lot of these agencies because they're trying to secure their, their bread and it's, and for them and their own kind. And that's wrong. You know, this is a municipal government and it's supposed to serve everybody. Everybody should have a, 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 an opportunity to eat at the table of wealth, political and economic power, okay? So, you know, again, so it, it, stop and frisk, I'm against that. Okay, and that's the reason I wanted to come up with Operation Rescue. Tap into the funding of the NYPD. Fund it and recruit at-risk people or youth that's gonna be targeted from age sixteen, like we talked.
Yeah, I like that.
All right? And, and then train them, give them counseling. Also involve the religious community, train them. And then, and then put them back into the community, getting a stipend payment, right? And, and so that they can patrol the community and, 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 and encourage positive behavior within their own, uh, 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 community. Black and Latino alike, Caribbean alike. And, and, and it's just to get people off the street and give them something better to do than stand on a corner. Possibly, I'm not demonizing anybody, possibly selling drugs or whatever, but give them something better to do other than standing on the corner twenty-four, seven, uh, seven days a week. And, and, and another thing I, I wanted to talk about also is that, um, you know, we had, uh, instance, instance, I think it was Remali Graham, uh, uh, maybe last, last year. Who, uh, was, um, I'm not sure, I'm not, there were so many shootings of involvement with police and, and Remali Graham and, um, another gentleman also, um, Jatik Reed. You know, where the police officer said he was, um, um, involved with selling drugs or whatever, they pursued him. Into his grandmother's house. I mean, you see it on videotape, they pursued him.
Actually, we're gonna actually have the family appear.
Yeah.
Pretty soon to talk about that.
He opened the door, the gentleman, I think it was Remali Graham, opened the door, went upstairs, closed the door behind him. And I forgot what the officer was there. No search warrant. No search warrant. You see it on camera, because a lot of times, a lot of the police officers, they do a lot of dirt. And they, in the cover of, 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 of no cameras, they, they quick to have cameras watching everything you do. But when, when they, when they, when they think they're not being watched, then that's when you see a lot of the, the wrongful acts come across. So they think there was a camera there, so you see them kicking down the door. No search warrant, search warrant. There's nothing in the penal code that says you have a right to kick down a person's door. And then you, you proceed to, 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 to chase that person. Predatory policing, like I always say. You're purs, you're pursuing them now and all of a sudden, some, something happened in the bathroom and then he gets shot and he, and shot and he's dead. What kind of answer do you have for the family? And then they're gonna have the grandmother stationed, uh, being questioned for five hours. Five hours.
Unbelievable.
Until, uh, 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 a similar man, Eric Stevenson, got involved and asked, is she being held against her will? And when the captain said, no, she's not being held against her will, that's when she walked out. So you did hold her against her will. So that you can corroborate a story that's unlike, uh, uh, what, what actually happened. But, you know, things, you know, God is not dead. God is alive. That's what I gotta say.
Most definitely. The power is to be, I'm telling you, nothing you can do about it. Bloomberg, nobody else. You just, the people just don't understand. So just have that faith. Uh, just want to let you know that, um, it's a pleasure to have, um, William in here tonight and crossover TV on our live set tonight. And, uh, and he, when I spoke to him on the phone, he said, I will be the next. Uh, I'm running for council and I will be elected to that seat. And I said, you sure will? With that attitude and what I'm hearing from you, it would be a, I'm, I'm not telling you to vote for. I don't have an opinion. Um, right Bentley? No opinion Bentley. But I'm hearing some really good things right here tonight. So, um, I'm very impressed. And, uh, folks out there, I just want you to think about what you're hearing. Because you, I want to bring you the candidates. So, um, I'm gonna invite William back because we're gonna do a lot of talking about what's needed in the system. Because sometimes, as you said, it just needs to be a meeting of the mind, a conversation, a sit-down. Maybe they need somebody like you to, to explain how we can do this. Let's come together, come up with a plan.
Yeah, like I said, I'm the first ever African-American candidate to run in this district. And with that comes great, uh, respect and pride, but also responsibility. And, you know, we have a, a duty to the community to serve them. You know, uh, we take an oath of office. And a lot of times, a lot of folks who are taking oath of office, they're not really upholding their part of the bargain, of, of, of the agreement. You know, I come from the Shorehaven community and one of the, the motivation, motivational factors that got me also involved into running for office is that I bought a, a condominium. And I was promised a tax abatement. Uh, a tax abatement that had to go through governmental agencies and so forth. They, they told us, they said, hey, uh, you know, if you work hard, save your money and, 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 and make a hefty down payment, you're gonna have a tax abatement for twenty-five years. Three years into the game, no tax abatement. You, you call all the elected officials, no answers. Well, but people have to suffer. We have to, we have to, we have to, we have to scramble and find ways to, to, to make a mortgage payment that had, that had to increase because now the taxes are being included into, into the arrangement. And we didn't, we didn't sign on the dotted line for that arrangement. So, so that means, you know, false promises, uh, by, by elected officials and government agencies. And you're, and you're letting down people. And people have to suffer because of someone's clerical error? No, that's unfair. And, and that's the reason why I'm running, among other reasons. And we gotta change the whole dynamic of the dynasty politics again. You know, I believe there's a divide and conquer attitude. That's the reason why people like myself, like-minded people like ourselves, don't have a place to meet. I even, our NAACP.
Let's talk about that. That's, that's, that's what, we have five, we, we're on a clock for five minutes.